I'm calling the seven PM council meeting to session for August twenty-sixth. Can I get a roll call?
Sure. Councilmember Perrigo, councilmember Zeder.
Present.
Councilmember Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Andres.
Here.
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hands.
Present.
And Mayor Byrd, you have a quorum.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse councilmember Perrigo as well as Mayor Byrd.
Support.
Can I get a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
In favor?
In favor, yes.
Opposed?
All right, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Onto item four A, approval of regular council meeting agenda.
I make a motion to amend this evening's agenda adding agenda item eleven F point five, which is an approval of a PO.
I support.
Those in favor? Aye. Aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Onto five A, approval of the study session meeting minutes from August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Any changes? Can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the study session meetings of August twelfth.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's approved. Onto five B, approval of the regular meeting minutes from August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Any adjustments or changes? Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the regular minutes from August twelfth.
I support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Onto seven A, first reading of ordinance five two-two to rezone one oh two Brady Street from C-one Central Business District to PUD Planned Unit Development District. Do we have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, in front of you is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to rezone one oh two Brady Street, which is at the northeast corner of Water Street or State Street and Brady, from C-one Central Business District to PUD Planned Unit Development District. This is the old Plant Three for Perrigo, their maintenance building, currently owned by one oh two Brady LLC. One oh two Brady LLC purchased this building off Safe Harbor as part of a deal to help Safe Harbor build their new building out on Sherman Street behind the old bowling alley. They've owned this building now for a couple of years. Their plan was to do some sort of event center here in coordination with a future hotel that may be built across the street. However, at this time, with the plethora of event centers being built around central Alligan County, they've gone back to the drawing board and, you know, to look at what new uses could be located here. They were approached by a gentleman that was going to do a marijuana processing center over there on Hooker Road by Perrigo facilities. That site just was a little bit too small for what his true desire and needs were. So he started looking at other places around Alligan County and kept coming back to the city of Alligan. He approached the Planning Commission for a rezoning request that occurred at their August nineteenth public, uh, Planning Commission meeting. They had a public hearing. Nobody spoke during this public hearing regarding this rezoning request. And the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend to city council that you have the first reading for this rezoning. Um, I'll take a moment here to let you know, and I mentioned this in the email that went out to you last Thursday with this packet. My goal and the Planning Commission's goal is that city council will hold a special meeting on September ninth at five fifteen to have a second reading on this. September ninth, you typically have a regular meeting. That's also the night of the fair parade, so we always cancel that meeting because at seven o'clock we are in the green machine, you know, participating in the Alligan County Fair Parade. However, after talking with the mayor, Roger Byrd, we felt we could schedule a special meeting before we hop in the green machine. Any questions on this rezoning request? Unfortunately, there are no city council members here that were at the Planning Commission meeting, so I will do my best.
Go ahead, ask just a quick question. I might be getting a little bit ahead of myself, but I know this is just for the rezoning. Do we know the process he's going to use for that? Is it an infusion? Is it, is he creating distillate to infuse? Do we know?
So the process that he's going to use, I'm not technical in this realm. It's a little more beefy than what the one was at Hooker Road. So if you recall that conversation, this is going to be a little more intense. Still going to have to follow all local ordinances and state ordinances as it, you know, affects odor, you know, nuisance stuff like that. Considering that this was a manufacturing plant at one time, there is confidence that, you know, they'll be able to, you know, do this in accordance with local law and state law.
Okay, and odor was the reason that I was asking that? Because depending on the process could create different and higher concentrations of an odor, so...
Yeah.
I was just wondering, with that hotel going across the street and things like that?
I, I will let you know that the Planning Commission did have a conversation with the developer during their review and the public hearing. You know, the requirement for air scrubbers, which is in our ordinance, so we don't have to put that as a condition of approval because it's already there. You have to do it. Is there, I know historically, um, the grow facility in the industrial park, when they ran into an issue, and that's adjacent to residents in the township. We've had a couple of issues about, you know, the smell and just a couple over a couple, you know, two years. And we're very quickly, um, we very quickly were able to, you know, engage the property owner and said, hey, you need to change the filters more often. They agreed and we haven't had a complaint on that since then.
If I may, I was at the one Planning Commission when the entrepreneur did come and he assured us that there would not be any odor. He's making gummies is basically, and it's all just manufactured and shipped out. There's not in tra, there's not traffic coming into, he doesn't sell, he just sells wholesale.
Have they reached out to Perrigo?
Perrigo's been, they were aware of the public hearing. Based on their location, they did not come to the public hearing.
Okay.
When we get down to the special use permit, which is further down in the agenda, in my report, you saw, we did have one local business speak during the public hearing at that one. But for the rezoning, this is straight up, you know, to rezone this to PUD, it's a first reading. All ordinances to the city council have a two-step process. You have the first reading where you just introduce it and then you take action, you know, you approve it at your second reading, which we are recommending will be for September ninth.
If nobody has any other questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion to set the second reading of ordinance five two-two at the special meeting on September ninth.
Yep.
At five fifteen.
What, what is there hurry for? Two weeks difference?
The city council meets essentially every two weeks. You meet the second and the fourth Monday of every month. But since the city council desires to cancel their second, second Monday meeting, so their first meeting is September, this would push this back a whole thirty days. And the ci, the Planning Commission, which is a business-friendly planning commission, and they want to encourage entrepreneurs and growth, is recommending that city council have it on September ninth. Council will be here anyways for the parade that night. We have to be, the vehicle has to be ready by five o'clock. We don't have to get into it till six. So having city council show up, you know, for, you know, six, five fifteen, just logistically works. And as you guys all know, the parade is a great community exposure for council. Give little kids candy, everyone loves it. We're already getting phone calls asking for the parade route and we remind them it's a county fair parade, not a city parade, but Parker does a good job letting everyone know for the fire trucks, horses, semi-trucks, the green machine is going to be going down the streets of Alligan. So that's why we're recommending the September ninth meeting.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Or three, motion passes. Onto section nine, public comment. If anybody has any public comment, feel free to come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and your public comment is limited to three minutes.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Elizabeth Pearson, I live at four one one River Street. And I am a district court judge. I was here previously, probably a month ago, to introduce myself prior to the primary election. We've now had that and the voters have decided on myself and that way to move on to November ballot. And so I'm here once again just to introduce myself and explain a little bit about my experience. So I am a lifelong member of Western Michigan, a longtime resident of Alligan County. In fact, my family was raised back to the nineteen twenties. Uh, my great-grandchild, Arnie Pearson, was a teacher at a one-room schoolhouse, which is now more of a home improvement. And so I started my career as a prosecutor in Marion County because when I grabbed a job in Marion County, I couldn't find a job at a prosecutor's office here. And so I went to Marion County, but when I had not got back to town yet, I decided I was going to keep doing what I love, which was advocating for victims and giving a voice to those who don't have one, of course, and so I wanted to protect where I was from. And so I've done that, I've been here the last six years, working with law enforcement, working with our kids and community safety. And doing that, I've gotten into a lot of share of paper as well as a lot of current for law enforcement because they know when it comes to our kids and our community, I'm going to make the right call. I'm going to make sure that our kids are safe, that our community is safe, and that the members of the public have been heard, as well as those that come in my courtroom. That includes both the defendant and the victims and those that participate in that process. I have also earned the endorsement of several state reps, several township supervisors, and those in and around the community because they know that I am committed to our community. I've spent a lot of time in the last six years working with Safe Harbor and working with them as a part of their multidisciplinary team, working on case review, as well as the Alligan County Coordinating Council to end domestic violence. I've been working on that council for the last six years, working on getting that messaging out and doing what we can to reduce the risk of domestic violence in our community and make sure that those who are impacted by that have the services they need. So as a judge, I want to make sure that I carry that forward. I would love to see Alligan County have a domestic violence treatment court or intervention court to help those family, the families that are displaced by that engage in those services more quickly and reduce the length of time it takes to bring a case to trial. It currently takes up to two years to do that. And so as judge, I want to make sure that we move that more quickly along. A lot of people say justice delayed is justice denied. And so as a judge, I want to make sure that we don't have a delay in that justice and that justice is served. So on November fifth, I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Have any more public comment?
Hi, we are Zevon Kimberly Flora. We live on one three six Park Avenue. We bought a piece of land a couple of years ago, one three zero Park Ave. House burnt down like twenty years ago, it's a vacant piece of land. We're paying two water bills. We were told that if we, um, we didn't have both our names on both the properties, so we needed to get both our names on both the properties to combine them. We contacted like OPI to do so and we did that and submitted the forms four months ago at least. And we're just wondering what's going on about our water bills? If we could get an answer on that or...
I don't know if I could give you an answer on it tonight.
No, not today, I understand you guys don't do that.
But you would be able to get with our city manager, Joel?
Yeah.
And also, I think you said OPI or PCI?
It's PCI.
Yeah, yes.
Do you have a copy of, I'm sorry for...
Oh, it's okay.
Breaking the quorum, but do you have a...
I don't have a copy, I sent it here.
You, you sent the application here?
Like four months ago.
We have your phone number, I'll call you.
Okay.
I apologize.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, bye-bye.
Any other public comment tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to eleven A, city boards, commissions, and area agendas. Eleven A one, downtown development authority, meeting minutes from August fourteenth.
Yes, I'm going to pull this up, Mayor Pro Tem, I wasn't ready. Yeah, so we went over the Mayhem Park fundraiser update with the DDA. Just let them know what we had, let the council know, that we had reached our fundraising limit successfully, even surpassing it. And then just kind of went over next steps for what to expect as far as the construction of the park goes. The plan is to start next year, pending a successful bidding process for the project and have it done by June first so that we can have a summer full of regular programming there at Mayhem Park. We also reviewed the, at that time, the current plans for the Hubbard Street parking lot construction project. No real major updates for them at that point in time. But again, talked about the projected timeline for that project, which could yet still be a fall construction or it could be a spring construction, it's still kind of up in the air, again, pending a bidding process. And then just a quick update and review on the completed bicycle racks that were designed and manufactured by the students at the tech center and then painted by the folks over at RCI Adventure Products and placed by our DPW. We got about half the batch in place. We were expecting the second batch to come in, probably late spring, early summer next year. They've got a whole new batch of tech center students coming in, so they got to get through their first and second semesters before that they're entrusted to manufacture the designs that were put together by students previous to them, those kids have since graduated. So, yeah, it was just kind of an, an update meeting, if you will, on everything that was going on, so.
Onto eleven eight-two, Public Space Commission, August fourteenth meeting. Bill?
Yes, we had our meeting. Betty McDaniel informed the group that the Alligan Labyrinth Project, which she was kind of in charge of it, was disbanded due to the lack of volunteer usage of it. They relinquished the maintenance to the city. Reported to the group that a hopeful springtime for work in the Mayhem Park. We were showing a diagram of the proposed improvements to the park. Let's see, what else we got here? It was reported that the funds of the Oakwood Cemetery would be willing, the friends of Oakwood Cemetery would be willing to share the cost of a consultant arborist. There was discussion about rebuilding and repurposing the trash receptacles to replace the blue plastic ones. Parker informed the group that Jeff Moore is working with the Alligan Conservative District to apply for a, this is a mouthful, Michigan Urban and Community Forest Tree Inflation Reduction Act Grant, which would cover, Parker was so kind to send me some of the information, that would be, uh, cover public tree inventories, urban forest planting, tree planting and establishment planning and care, tree pruning, community engagement and outreach, capacity building, tree and stump removals, nursery planting and establishment, and food, forest planting and establishment. Sounded like a very interesting grant if it goes through. Community cleanup was set for September twentieth at Hanson Park. Park tour date is scheduled for September eleventh at our meeting, scheduled for five thirty. A discussion for a railing, a railing along the accessibility ramp that enters the Griswold through the Marilla Lounge. And there was also comments made about the upkeep of sidewalks along M eighty-nine, M two-two that are overgrown with weeds and, for lack of other words, garbage laying around on the streets that we know is part of MDOT. MDOT is in charge, if they are, of all the bridge sidewalks throughout the whole state of Michigan. I don't know why it can't be something that our city can't take of seven hundred and fifty feet of sidewalk. Anyways, that's what was at the meeting. Parker, if I missed anything, please fill them in.
You covered it.
Thank you.
Only thing I noticed was a comment about more bike racks for some of our other parks, I think.
Yes, I got that written down, I forgot to mention that.
Anything to engage with the ACTAC again possibly for some of that, as well as in some of our city parks?
Yeah, if we end up pursuing that idea, that would be the route that we'd, you know, would take because we've had some positive response to those bike racks that we do have installed that we would definitely want to follow up that again.
I was thinking about, is like, give them like a, what this, who's this park named after and what's important in the park and maybe they can come up with some designs for some of our parks?
Absolutely, yeah.
Even though the ones we have look very nice, I'm not, I've seen one bike tied up to them. So they're good decorations, but I don't know why we would want more.
All right, on to eleven eight-three, Planning Commission, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
That is on me, similar to Parker, let me pull it up real quick. All right, Planning Commission is very, very busy. We had two public hearings. We had, our first one was, this is not going quick. So first one was a subarea plan for the downtown Alligan area titled the Mill District Subarea. We're going to review this later on in the next public hearing they had was on the rezoning of one oh two Brady Street, which we just approved, or we, we just had the first reading and scheduled a second reading for September ninth. And then the third one was on a special use permit for one oh two Brady, which is required per our ordinance for any kind of business that's involved with the marijuana issue. So those are the three things they had come in front of them. And then the fourth thing they discussed was a preliminary review of a new housing development at five hundred Delano, which we are going to discuss a little bit this evening on the land transfer application. So those are the things that came through the Planning Commission at their last meeting.
All right, on to eleven B one, request to approve accounts payable and payroll. Of course.
I have a request to approve accounts payable and payroll. Accounts payable in the amount of three million eight hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-four cents and payroll in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, or one hundred and thirty thousand eighty dollars and twenty-five cents for a total disbursement of three million one hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. And I make a motion to approve.
I support.
Those, ah, sorry, yays?
Aye.
Those disapproval? Motion passes. Onto eleven B two, adoption of resolution twenty-four point two-nine, amending the city's investment policy. Do we have a report?
Yep, I'll handle this one. At your previous meeting, we got a presentation from our investment banker, Jamie with Huntington National Bank. During that presentation, it was identified by Mayor Pro Tem that our policy limits our investments to a five-year term. However, the charter allows us to go up to ten years for a term. So our finance director, Tracy Stahl, went ahead and made that change in the investment policy, and that is what's presented to you this evening.
Any questions or, from council? Anybody with public comment? Can I get a motion to approve them?
I make a motion to approve.
All support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same? Motion passes.
Good catch, Peter.
Onto eleven D one, approval of PO twenty-five dash zero seven seven six for Tyler Dine Instruments in the amount of ten thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars to purchase a new effluent sampler for the water resource recovery facility. Do we have a report, Doug?
Yep, so approximately a couple of weeks ago, the sampler for the effluent, the refrigeration unit failed. Parts are no longer available for these, these were purchased in two thousand and five. They've gone through several upgrades since then. So we would like to purchase a new sampler. The plan is to actually move our current effluent sampler, which is still the older model, to the effluent sample position and put the new one in place of that one sampling the effluent. Our discharge permit requires us to sample the effluent and that's really the sampler that counts because it has to be reported on. We use the effluent sampler to sample so that we know what's coming into the plant. It's for our knowledge and operation of the plant, so we still need the sampler and it needs to be refrigerated for the tests that are, that we do on it. So that's why we need to purchase a new one.
Was this in the budget?
Yes, it's covered under the repair and replacement line item. And there's listed, samplers are listed as fifteen-year replacement.
Okay.
So.
Do we have any council questions? Any public questions? Then I'd make a request for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve PO twenty-five zero seven seven six for Tyler Dine Instruments for the amount of ten thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars.
All support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Onto eleven D two, approval of a change order for PO twenty-three dash zero six seven two for Milbacher and Son in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand for the lead service replacement program. Doug, do you have a report?
Yep, so this is the Booker funding that we received from the state for lead service replacement. When we originally received it, we had a contract with Milbacher to replace services we identified throughout, I shouldn't say, through certain neighborhoods in Alligan. They completed them during the summer of twenty-three. We also had a portion of the money that we're using, what the, the state calls forest account, basically it's city employees replacing them. At that time, the city had hired new, three new employees, purchased some equipment to be installing them. The program is going great, but we cannot use the money that we have left by the deadline of August thirty-one, twenty twenty-five at the amount that we, we charged to replace the, the services with our own staff. Milbacher approached me about three weeks ago, asking, hey, do you want us to help you with services? And, you know, worked with Milbacher and basically we worked out process where they will work alongside the city workers, doing the prep work at an address. City workers will install the service line from the house to the street. Milbacher will make the connection at the street. Plumber will make the connection inside the house and Milbacher will do the restoration of the, the yard, sidewalk, and asphalt, or whatever is needed. I saw the one hurdle is we, you know, need to make sure that the state is on board with this. So I emailed our state person that handles our Booker funding and then I called her and she said that as long as city council approves a change order to increase Milbacher's original contract, that she would, should be able to approve them doing additional work for us. So wrote up the change order. Because we're not doing a per-service, basically they, they will charge us what time they have for their employees and equipment and working on these services alongside the city crew. We went with just a dollar amount to increase it by. So the seven, that's how the seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty thousand came about. That still leaves the city workforce approximately four hundred and sixty thousand to work, you know, during that same time and purchase materials.
One of the things that worries me about your statement, Doug, is they said they should, is not, they will. One of the things that worries me about your statement, Doug, is they said they should is not they would.
That is what I was told. Her words were I should be able to approve the change order.
So she's gonna have to run it up to her bosses. Before she could take it to her bosses, she needs to see know that the city council as well because their bosses don't want to be bothered with reviewing this and going into their regs until they're confident that the city really wants to do this work.
So we won't issue the change order actually till Milbacher till we get approval from.
Correct. I mean, I mean, it's a two step process. The city has to approve it and Eagle has to approve it. And since they are the state level, they get the approval needs to happen here before Eagle will even have that discussion.
So you're telling me if we approve it and they don't, we're off the hook for it?
Correct.
Okay, I can live with that.
Yes, I pretty much explained that to Milbacher and they know and understand that because, you know, I told him if state doesn't approve it, we don't have funding to pay you, so.
Doug, I just had a couple of questions. So if this change order does go through here tonight and then the state does approve it, does that have any impact on those employees that we've hired through that Booker funding?
Not really. I I actually discussed this with Joel and the money that we have left for our city employees, the the city employees that were hired for this. So from October of twenty three till now, the city has spent five hundred and sixty thousand replacing services. So we're keeping four hundred and sixty thousand for approximately one year of work. So I don't see an issue that we should not be able to retain those employees for this coming year um as was explained to them when they were hired. You know, I get, so no, it should not impact those employees and our goal here is to use the money before we have to would have to return it, which we don't really return it, we'd not be able to draw off of it.
And that kind of leads to my next question, which there's no way to get like an extension for use of those funds?
When I talked with them this winter, that she said that if we thought we'd go past the twenty twenty five date, we could file a letter with the state for an extension. But my understanding is this is ARPA funds. ARPA funds have to be used by twenty twenty six. So we might only get an extend four month extension, so. If we can use it by next August, plus get a lot of services done. I think that that's that's my goal on this.
So worst case scenario, they do not approve that, which I don't see why they wouldn't, but who knows with the state sometimes. Would you be able to hire more staff with that to just?
That would something I would I would have to review with Joel.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. The other option the state did because, you know, their their comment was Milbacher was already bid bid out. You had a contract with them. We've actually did one change order with them already, do another change order, they can keep going. The other option would be to totally rebid it again and then so.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Any public comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve? The change order for twenty five dash zero, sorry, twenty three dash zero six seven two?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Eleven D three Approval of P O twenty five dash zero seven 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 for Milbacher and Sons in the amount of seventy nine thousand seven hundred and fifty five to repair the driveway at the Water Resource Recovery Facilities. Doug, do you have a report for us?
Yep, uh this uh is mostly the driveway that goes around the large circular tank as you come into the plant. It just sees a lot of truck traffic. Um the septic trucks, the industrial waste trucks, I'll see it. The problem is the high groundwater in that area. Um it's a very flat driveway, so water doesn't shed off of it. It sets on it, it sets underneath it. And it just gets worn out. Um you can see by the picture, um we've patched them several times. The contract um was bid out. Milbacher was the only bidder on it. The there's a few spots in the driveway, what you see right there is one of them where they'll actually excavate down to the sub base. If it's uh spongy and wet, they'll remove that, put in new sub base and then build a driveway up from there and then the final goal will be mill and fill um a portion of that driveway. As well as re-topping the driveway that the septic or the bio solids haulers utilize. And then putting the millings in a driveway around to the backside of the U V building.
Any questions from council?
I don't have any questions, but just knowing that some of this is from those septic haulers and industrial waste haulers and things. It'll be nice to see maybe that put on rates a little bit more.
I'm sorry.
Could add that a little bit to rates like maintenance?
We have been raising the rates. You know, the last couple of years, uh half a cent each year. The industrial haulers, two years ago, we raised it three percent. This year, we raised it five percent. So we have been raising it.
For sure. And I know that and I appreciate that. I know that came from a lot of discussion, but moving ahead.
Any other questions or comments from council? Any public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Make a motion that we approve P O twenty five dash zero seven 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 for Milbacher and Sons for the amount of seventy nine thousand seven hundred and fifty five dollars.
All support.
All those in sort supports, signal with a yea.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, on to Public Works eleven E. Eleven E one Adoption of Resolution twenty four dot thirty Authorizing Wildlife Control Hunt at Pagum Field, Alligan Airport.
All right, similar to last year, the D P W is requesting that city council authorize a wildlife control hunt during the twenty twenty four bow hunting season for deer. As part of a safety uh program. The resolution's in your packet. It's pretty that pretty much that straightforward for you. Any questions?
So it's still just city workers and just during the normal bow hunting season?
Correct.
Yep. Questions from council or?
No, I just have a statement that we do need it. Deer are absolutely terrorizing our city. Everybody's gardens are shot as well as a danger to the airplanes moving in and out of there.
Yeah, they they have made much comments whenever I'm up there that there's a lot of deer. Since we haven't invested in fencing yet, they definitely want something to try to help mitigate some of it. Do you have any public comment? Seeing none, uh can I get a motion?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty four point three.
I support.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Eleven F two Approval of the Alligan Airport Advisory Board Bylaws.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hans. Uh very quickly, the airport advisory board is requesting that their bylaws be amended to allow for remote participation in their meetings. City Clerk Michaela, myself and Doc Cosman have engaged our city attorney on whether or not this is allowed under the Michigan Open Meetings Act. According to our city attorney, this is allowed since they are advisory purely in nature. They have no authoritative uh powers. We decided to amend our bylaws to set forth the standards on how one could participate remotely. Uh those standards are what are in that bylaws there. Uh the airport advisory board is a advisory board that meets the first Monday of each month. Uh several of the board members have jobs that take them outside of the region, outside of the state uh for their work. However, they are able to call in and they constantly ask, can I just call in? And it's always, no, you can't. But if you approve these amendments tonight, they will be able to call in and we can have more meetings where we have full attendance instead of partial attendance.
As well as also reaching a quorum. We've had a couple incidents of not being able to reach a quorum.
Correct. Thank you.
So there is, yeah, the I think the charter pilot that has his business plane out there. He's asked a couple of times because I'm sure he's traveling as a charter. So is there any questions or? And can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Alligan Airport Advisory Board Bylaws.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Eleven F. Eleven F one Approval of the Mill District Subarea Master Plan. Have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Um recently, the Planning Commission has completed an update to the Mill District Subarea Master Plan. They held a public hearing on this issue at their August nineteenth meeting. No comments were received regarding this update. Essentially, this covers the area for properties that front State and Water Street on the south end of the downtown and then expands into what I more commonly refer to as the Mill District along Mill District Road. In the report, you saw the area highlighted in the map. It's also on the screen for the audience this evening. Potential development uses identified in this plan are breweries, wineries, and other processing tasting facilities. Contractors bases for off-site work, event venues, indoor or outdoor recreation and entertainment facilities, light assembly and or light manufacturing. Marijuana businesses such as growth, processing, and micro businesses, outdoor recreational retail or rentals, research and development resorts. And then also shooting for indoor only or archery ranges. When you look at this general area, while it is in the downtown, the uses that historically that have been here and the uses that are currently operating here are not your typical central business district downtown uses. They are not retail, you know, personal services like salons or massages, offices. They are what I call this mixture of, you know, Bohemian industrial uses we have down there. So as the Planning Commission discussed this uh part of the downtown, they felt there was a need to massage it to allow for some of the existing uses like what Perrigo does at Plant One right there. What Tantric is doing at their brewery facility. What the gentleman is doing at the old Alligan Event, that's benchtop electrical processing manufacturing that he does there. They manufacture little processors. And then what uh applicant that we're going to talk about later on in the meeting, the marijuana processor at the old Perrigo Plant Three building. So we just felt the need to kind of look at this. Um we have talked to most of the property owners in there outside Perrigo. Um this afternoon, I had a conversation with uh Joe Leverance, which is part of the Baker Art Studios down there. They also process and make stuff. They're just not a store. So things is things are manufactured there as well. So we see this at this, you know, master plan update, which is a sub area master plan for the downtown mill district area. Really opens the doors a little bit. It legitimizes current uses that are there and allows for, you know, some future endeavors that may occur. Any questions for staff?
I have a question. So Joel along um between Brady and Water there where you have the line. I don't know what way it would be, just past right before Mahan Park, it looks like. Between Brady and Water there, the.
I see it on the map on the screen.
Yeah. The west side, maybe. I don't know. Anyway, where's that? What's all included right there? Does it include Mahan Park? Or does it not go that far?
It does not.
Just so like where the motel potential one oh one Brady.
Yeah, one oh one Brady, a vacant lot there. That's not included in this.
And then across, is that Sherwood's? Does it go in the alley there?
Doesn't go, it it so so when you go on the Brady, if you turn, yeah, so if you're driving across the Iron Bridge and you turn left on the Brady, it includes Perrigo's old Plant Three, the maintenance building, and the parking lot. So when you get to the new restaurant Tilt, it stops there. It doesn't include Tilt, that parking lot or Sherwood's. It stops before you get to the more. Yeah, because once you once you get to like where Tilt is and then the park on the south, what I'm gonna call on the west side, south side of Brady, that's more pedestrian intense use. And so we don't want to, you know, you gotta draw a line somewhere.
Yep.
And that's where we're drawing that line.
Where that was.
Most definitely. And the Planning Commission spent a lot of time having that conversation of they 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 know the direction they're going, but at the same time, they don't want to completely give up on that pedestrian feel along Brady. And so they wanted to preserve the waterfront to be, you know, retail pedestrian focused and they wanted to preserve the restaurants of, you know, Tilt and Sherwood's Cove. But they felt the Perrigo building is such a significant, by significant, I mean, it's just a big building. It's a big block building. So, you know, it's gonna be hard to get a shoe store to go in there. Or something like that, you know, it's gonna be, it's going to be manufacturing or, you know, industrial in nature.
That's full turn on. So this is just to allow for P U D or that the master plan calls for P U D in this district? It's not actually assigning it a new zoning or is it?
It is not. No. So I believe in the ma- I believe in that sub area plan, Peter, you're correct. It identifies that as rezoning requests come into this area, they will be rezoned to P U D where we're allowed to establish the exact uses that are going to be in the P U D instead of this, you know, wide open kind of thing.
They come in and they're using it as commercial and then they don't have to ask for a P U D.
Correct. If if it's already C one, they're good. Yep, because those uses are allowed by right.
Now, the question for I would probably send back to our folks at pub at our planning and zoning. Do we have a light manufacturing zoning?
We do not have a light manufacturing zoning. Uh we do have light manufacturing definitions in our C one right now. Uh I believe we reference a benchtop use as opposed to presses or extrusion if you, you know, think of a fabricator of some kind. So we do address it that way. And for the P U D discussion and then this master plan discussion, that light manufacturing is just a good reference of we're not looking for this to become, you know, a stamping plant for bumpers or automobiles. But if it's gonna be, like I mentioned earlier, what that gentleman is doing at the old veterinary building and he's doing benchtop electrical control processors. That, you know, fits. You're not having an impact around your neighborhood. You're not hearing that bang every three seconds when the press drops.
I just didn't know if we wanted to ever add a light manufacturing zoning or?
Yeah, the closest the closest we come to is in our master plan we just updated is mixed industrial commercial along two twenty two and airway out by the airport. But for zoning, I think it's just manufacturing and that's all. But it's something that they will, they're they are, the Planning Commission is currently updating the master plan. And so most, I mean, the zoning ordinance, so we're more that more most definitely I'll make a note to talk to them. Yeah, most definitely we'll be talking about the zoning ordinance and what light industrial could look like in that.
I don't really have a a question per se, but I know that in my time on council, I've seen multiple um ideas and plans for the Mill District. You know, it's from camping to residential and I just want to comment that with this new idea that the Planning Commission has brought forward, I think that's probably more more likely to occur down there. Though it would have been awesome to be able to have some residential development in that area. This just does fit better and so.
Maybe when the bridge is out and the FEMA problem goes away.
Right, our flood plain changes.
Yeah, the twenty twenty three FEMA map updates has extended the floodway now north of the bridge. Where before it stopped just in the Mill District, it now comes across the bridge. That was part of my conversation today with Mr. Leverance. Asking how does one fight FEMA? And I said, I don't know. If you find out, let me know.
Any other comments or questions from council? Any public comment on this? And I'd like a motion to approve or unless I don't have to motion or because.
Yeah, yeah, we need a motion to approve this. Yeah, council has to adopt this.
I motion to adopt the Mill District Subarea Master Plan.
I make a motion that we approve the master plan for the Mill District.
I support it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. On to eleven F two Approval of the Special Use Permit Application for one oh two Brady Street. Have a report?
Yeah, so the final council agenda item this evening regarding one oh two Brady Street, you've had quite a few focuses on a special use permit. So Mr. Gillies is in the audience this evening. Um he is a gentleman that. He is a gentleman that is looking to rent one oh two Brady Street from one oh two Brady Street LLC to install a marijuana processing center there. This does require a special use permit from the city council. The review occurs at the Planning Commission level and then city council takes a recommendation from the Planning Commission. So, they had their review at their August nineteenth meeting. During that meeting, John Burnett, who is the gentleman that owns the old Alleghan Veterinary Clinic Building on Water Street and does that benchtop electrical control processing work, did speak during the public hearing, just verifying that there's not going to be any offensive odors that come from that building. Paraphrased, they're really not his cup of tea. So, he just wanted to make sure it wasn't gonna stink up the, this area. We're comfortable with Mr. Gillies, the current state of the building, and then our local and state ordinance says that noxious odors have to be contained and the use of state-of-the-art air scrubbers will be able to, you know, ensure that odor doesn't escape the building. The condition, the approval from the Planning Commission is conditioned that the rezoning goes through. So, this is something where, when you approve it this evening, we will need you to make part of your motion, the condition that the rezoning occurs on September ninth. But we need to keep this project also moving forward. During his presentation, Mr. Gillies answered some of the questions from the Planning Commission, addressed, you know, some of the concerns about just the building design, which, you know, he's not doing any building additions. So, what we see is what the building is. But he's gonna address some of the concrete issues that are on the building, some of the asphalt issues in the parking lot. And then he introduced the idea that he might engage somebody on solar panels to help generate electric as well. So. I'm sure Mr. Gillies can come answer questions if council has specific questions of him about his operations. But that's staff's report for now.
Good evening. I'm branded. Happy to help answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I do have a question. I know that the conversation about odor came up, but are you planning on just infusing or are you actually like extracting distillates or how, what is your process?
Yeah, so we will be extracting to make the oil for the oils, but there won't be any odor from that.
Okay.
And it'll be managed through the air handler as well.
Okay. I just have some context with the CRA, so this was something that we kind of talked about with that. And just for council, I don't believe that the city would receive any funding from the state for a processing facility. So, that's not anything that we would receive, you know, tax funds from, just as a reminder, but we do have application fees. So, I know that we're, we're getting some recompense in that way, but that was my question. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
For doing extraction, are you using any volatiles that are flammable? And have you, will you be going through a review with the fire marshal on the systems needed in that building?
Yes, we will be and it has to be, we're required to use a C one D one booth, which will be installed beforehand or after the equipment arrives. Once that happens, the BFS, the Bureau of Fire Safety has to approve it, the CRA has to approve it, and then local agencies as well.
All right.
So, there's a lengthy process to make sure that it's safe.
Sounds good. Any other questions from council? Any public comment? Seeing done, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the special use permit application for one oh two Brady Street with the condition that the rezoning occurs on September ninth.
I support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Under eleven F three, adoption of resolution twenty-four dot thirty-one to cancel the study session and regular meeting of the Alleghan City Council for September ninth, twenty twenty-four.
No need for a staff report. It's pretty clear in the packet.
Any public comment? Any council questions? Can I get a motion?
So, are we canceling that meeting?
Or canceling our regular?
Yeah, yeah, the study session starts at six. The regular meeting starts at seven. So, you are canceling those. Those have already been scheduled and noticed to the public as part of our annual noticing process. Then Mayor Byrd is scheduling a special meeting per his authority in Council Rules and Procedures for September ninth at five fifteen.
Fifteen minutes earlier than our normal study session at five thirty?
Yeah, you're right. That's six o'clock. I apologize. Five thirty. Thanks for the correction.
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-four point three one to cancel study session and regular meeting the Alleghan City Council for September ninth, twenty twenty-four.
I support.
All those in favor, signal with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Four one, motion passes. Eleven F four, approval of the land transfer application for five hundred Delano Ave. Have a report on this?
Yeah.
So, I will handle this very quickly for council. You are, there's a request from Pete Borst to transfer part of his land, approximately twenty-five feet width of his land to his fellow neighbor. This is part of a process to prepare five hundred Delano Street for redevelopment into forty-two single-family homes. This is a project that staff has been working with Pete Borst since two thousand and eighteen, I believe, is when we first had the first couple conversations. Councilmember Andres had several emails or texts with me saying, hey, I talked to Pete. He wants to know what's going on. What can we do? And, you know, I'm very thankful that we've gotten to this part and, you know, the support of some council members in trying to move this along. The Planning Commission will be going through the full review of the development later this fall. As I mentioned in the review of the Planning Commission minutes, they had a preliminary review earlier this year. No major issues were shared during that review. But tonight, we do need to approve this land transfer so we can keep this project moving forward. Any questions for staff?
I make a motion, we approve the land transfer application for five hundred Delano Avenue.
I support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Eleven F five, approval of PO twenty-five zero seven seven eight for straight line fencing to construct basement storage units in the basement of City Hall. Have a report?
Yeah, first of all, thank you, council, for amending the agenda and adding this. One thing we've talked about at City Hall now is we are not going to do bid openings the Friday before council meeting, but let's do them on a Wednesday before council meeting so that can make it into the packet as a normal agenda item. As mentioned earlier this year, the city staff is going to go out for bids to construct several storage units in the basement. This was budgeted. Council, council approved this item in their budget for this year. You set aside seventy-five thousand dollars to do all of this work. I will let you know that this is just a portion of the work. We still have to install security cameras down there as well as looking to if we need to buy additional key cards for future tenants. So, we went out for bid. We received three bids, the low bid of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-one from Straight Line. So, we are asking you this evening to approve that purchase order so we can continue to move forward with this project. Any questions from council for staff?
One, do we have an estimate on what the camera addition and key cards kind of budgetary are?
So, several thousand dollars. The cameras shouldn't be too much. One thing we have to do with the cameras is we have to tie them in to our current system we have in City Hall. And we already have some concern that the DVR that we purchased when we redid the City Hall might be a little undersized with the number of cameras we've added. We've added exterior cameras. We've added fisheye camera so we could pick up the dead space that was in front of the restrooms a couple years ago. So, we're, we're comfortable that we could probably do this based on our other cameras we put around here for, you know, a few thousand dollars, but nowhere near that seventy-five total. And the key cards are really pennies for us to buy those. So, I'm not too concerned about that one.
Was dehumidification going to be installed of any sort since there will be paper products and so on that are degradable to moisture?
That was not the plan to put a dehumidifier down there. As part of our lease, we'll let people know that it's fire protected. That is something that we could probably look into if necessary. I think as, we'll probably, we'll bring the full rental program back to council with how much we want to pay, how much we want to charge for rent. When we brought this back to you earlier this year when we discussed it, there were a couple council members that questioned if we were charging too little for this space. Based on our numbers right now, we think we, if all twenty-five units are rented, it'll generate about twenty-five hundred dollars a month, which is thirty thousand dollars a year. But we're gonna, council's got to approve this whole fee schedule. The camera install is gonna be two thousand five hundred and fifty, according to the note Parker just gave me. So, I guess we already got that estimate, which is well within my purchasing, you know, authority.
I was just trying to gather up so I can get an ROI on it, how long. So, it's probably about two years, which before I think when we talked about it was like, because we budgeted seventy-five, I think we're talking more like three years at that point. So, happy it will come in under budget hopefully and then actually start generating some offset for the City Hall here.
I, I will let you know, without prodding them, the Arts Council reached out to Parker and asked, do you have anywhere in the downtown we can store stuff? Because everything is at different board members' houses. And they go, it'd be really nice if we could just have a central location. So.
And I said, funny, you said.
Yes, it's coming down the pipeline. And I would just remind council, most of you are aware, when we built the City Hall in twenty nineteen, the goal was to lease out all the spaces that the city was not leasing. We were successful with the two first floor offices here. We have not been successful in getting people to build out the basement and the offices. I'm not sure why. I mean, it's clean. There's an elevator. Lack of windows is probably a problem and lack of bathrooms is probably a problem. So, we feel this is the best option. You know, we're now five years into being in this building and sometimes you gotta bait on one idea and pursue the, the one that's gonna work.
I just noticed, just on their bid, that they said they can only hold the price for ten days because of unstable material prices for a straight line or, yeah, straight line fence. So, we want to make sure that.
Yeah, we're within that, yeah. We, we've already, so we contacted them Friday afternoon. Yep, and the other two bidders as well.
Our fencing is going crazy. I'm sorry. I can't believe they bid at that low. I'll be honest with you. And it's kind of scary. I'll, I'll be honest. When I looked at these price, I mean, we're looking at, what, twenty-five thousand dollars difference between high and low? It's kind of scary.
One person decided to look at what our budget was because that's public information. Well, any other questions?
That's not true, but.
Any public comments? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve PO twenty-five dash zero seven seven eight for straight line fencing.
I support.
All those in favor, signal with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, section's twelve A, appointment of Michael Brower to the Alleghan Airport Advisory Board.
Yeah, so in your packet is an application from Michael Brower. He's Brower Aviation. They are opening a small business out at the airport to do avionics. And so, we have a vacancy. He wants to be on the board. So, we are sending it up the pipeline to city council to appoint.
Any questions?
No, looks like a great applicant. Very excited that he's also looking to open a business. I know they've been talking about needing airport maintenance out there since I was on that commission. So, especially for like oil changes and such, if I recall.
Yep.
So, I make a motion to appoint Michael Brower to the Alleghan Airport Advisory Board.
I will support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So passes and he's now on the board. Communications from city manager, council, and mayor.
I have nothing for council.
Anything, Parker?
Just that we're wrapping things up. This evening was the last fork in the road event for the summer. There were quite a few people out there. I didn't get a chance to talk to many food trucks because a lot of them were busy and had a lot going on, but it seemed to be a, a well-intended last night. And then the last rolling on the river is this coming Friday. Our band is Patty Perschala and the Mayhaps. Their grand app is natives but have relocated to Nashville and we got them on a little come up back into the West Michigan area. So, we're looking forward to closing it out with them.
Uh, yes, just wanted to put it out there that I will be emailing tomorrow, but as soon as you guys are able to let me know whether you plan on attending and participating in the fair parade, please let me know. That way, we know how much candy to get.
I will remind council, you don't have to throw a handful at every kid in the parade.
I am not sitting behind Roger because he throws his whole bucket at all the kids.
Anything from you, Doug? Mike, anything? Bill? Just go right down the line.
I'm gonna say, let's talk about that roundabout, folks. I went on it two times today and I did very well. And I credit the city for having the walkabout because I took it seriously. I filed all of the arrows, got it in my head. My husband and I were walking the other day and I saw a semi coming down the road and I'm like, stop. I've got to watch this happen. It went through no problems. He said, you're very weird. And I said, if you had to hear for three years people talking about this roundabout, you would want to make sure it, it worked too. So, very happy with the way it's going. Hopefully, everyone else is too. Parker and Ryan, thank you so much for everything you do during the summertime. It's been great events. So, that's it for me.
I don't have anything after that.
The only thing I would add to the roundabout is if you could please signal when you get to your intersection that you're gonna exit at so that the people coming on, there's proper signaling techniques that should be taken account. And I know our town's not the best at signaling while we're downtown, but just speeds up the whole process for everybody. Other than that, we can adjourn at eight oh seven.